Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. And welcome you to the second sitting and the panel which is dedicated to the NSG and the current issues in the NSG. I have to start by publicly admitting that I also have a long career in sitting through many multilateral disarmament, non-proliferation, and even export controls fora since 1992, when I was transferred in the Hungarian Foreign Ministry from Czech desk to the security policy department. But NSG is the single one meeting I had never been to. I know many in the group, in this room, I'm sure would be much better fit chairing this session than myself, so I try to be humble and you will hear probably from me many, many questions, I mean all the questions that I ever had about the NSG but never dared to ask. I'm going to use the opportunity this afternoon. But I think it's much more interesting to hear from our panelists first. You have the names on the screens, but let me introduce them very briefly. Ambassador Grossi on my right, Mr. Mark Hibs, and then Mr. Christos Karatzis to my left, both of them. We will start, I will give the microphone first to Ambassador Grossi and then Mark Hibs, and then Christos is going to inform you about what they have on their minds about the NSG. Let me say a few words about the panelists and with about Ambassador Grossi, who is currently the chairman of the NSG from 2014 to 2016. And he's got a long diplomatic career and experience, I'm just naming a few. From his very rich CV, it's the Diplomatic Conference of the Convention on Nuclear Safety, the chief of cabinet of the Office of the Director General of the IAEA, and Assistant Director General for Policy of the IAEA, just to name the most recent ones. But he was representative of Argentina to NATO and SHAPE, and he was also the chairman of the Group of Governmental Experts on the UN Register of Convention on Arms and Special Advisor to the Under-Secretary General for Disarmament of the UN, and so on and so forth. Let me welcome you and give you the floor straight away. I encourage these speakers to take the five minutes limits not strictly. So I encourage them to go a little bit more into detail, to trigger the discussion, and but then I think we will have ample time for questions and answers. With that, please, the floor is yours now.
Thank you very much. In the tradition of these meetings, I should start by saying, "I'll be brief," which is a guarantee that I will not.
I don't want to say that.
But I'll be brief. So I will not abuse your generosity. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here with you, with this audience, all experts, colleagues, who know as much as I do about this or even more, and this panel of good friends, old and new. Let me then try to say, try to tell you where the NSG stands at the moment and what would be the issues that could shape its future in view of the title of this session, which are not reduced to the issue of membership, which I am sure is on everybody's, or at least to those who follow the NSG's minds at the moment, whether country A, B, or C is going to make it or not. Because I truly believe that the Nuclear Suppliers Group, export control regimes in general, play a crucial role in the complex of issues and institutions that form the non-proliferation regime as we know it. And this is in and by itself a very important element that we should never forget. When we put these things into perspective, we are reminded that the Nuclear Suppliers Group came to be precisely because certain provisions of the Nuclear Non-Proliferation Treaty, Article 3.2, were not self-executing and thus required some explanation of what was meant by prohibiting or restricting certain transfers or actions, developments. That required to be put into clear terms that would be understandable for countries to know what they could do or not in this area. Hence, the Sangre Committee first, for those historians of non-proliferation, it is well-known, the Sangre Committee first, and then the NSG proper. But the NSG, as that cigarette brand, has come a long, long way from what it was days where it was known as the London Club and a show of mystery and opacity surrounded what is, what it, sorry, was doing in those years. Now, the Nuclear Suppliers Group, through its guidelines, its control lists, has become the indispensable reference point whenever export control regimes at national level are being considered, or when multilateral international action is needed. When you have things coming in front of the UN sanctions committees, when you have to think about something nuclear that needs to be restricted or controlled or overlooked and seen is through the NSG lists. This is the reference, it's the reference that the EU lists have adopted, so one can say is the universal reference that is out there. Could be better things, or it could be perfected, I'm sure, or improved, but what we have there is clearly the point of reference we all follow. So, the NSG then, as a reference, has also grown in its membership. As I said, it started as a relatively very, very small group of nuclear nations to its present status with 48 countries. With 48 countries, quite clearly you are in front of a grouping that is representing almost all regions and different degrees of technological advancement. This is very important since one of the traditional debates we've had in the non-proliferation community and in the non-proliferation scene in general has been the issue of the validity, the legitimacy of export controls as such. And the NSG used to be one of the, I would say, targets of choice for those deciding or those characterizing it as a cartel, as something that was there instituted, perhaps as an instrument, I would say, even of technological domination, from the haves towards the have-nots. But clearly, if that was ever truth, and I doubt it, it's no longer the case. This day and age, I would say, to put it in very simple terms, it's not cool to be outside the NSG. People want to come in the NSG. People want to join it, and not because of any restrictive approach to these things, it's because when you are seriously into certain technological developments, when you are building a serious nuclear infrastructure, when you aspire to have a civilian nuclear program, when you even want to have an export profile for your nuclear industry, it is obvious that this is something that requires a lot of international interaction or trade. And without the label of quality, without the levels of assurance that being a party to the NSG brings, that becomes very, very difficult, if not impossible. There may be other considerations, and that is a subjective dialogue that we can have or not, but objectively speaking, you need to be part of this group to get the assurances and give the assurances to the international community that whatever you are going to be transferring to others will not be conducive to the proliferation of nuclear weapons elsewhere. So this is crucial. And this is why I say that, moving to another point, that in today's world, the export controls are, and in particular the NSG, is an essential, I would say, instrument in the mechanism of non-proliferation. The macro level of treaties is there. We have the NPT, we have the other conventions, we have the CWC, we have the BWC and other instruments, perhaps a ban if this succeeds, but it is clear that that level is more or less fixed. What happens on the ground is the realm of export control regimes, in terms of trade, of course. Safeguards is another matter. But what happens when countries want to get things or want to export things, the only way to have guarantees is through export control regimes. So this has been a tendency, a trend, that has, I would say, consolidated itself through the past few years. In fact, nowadays, the issue of export controls is rarely discussed, when you take even the hotly debated and highly controversial deliberations of the NPT review conferences, this issue is more or less not discussed, I would say. It's taken for granted that export control regimes are there and that language exists there to cover their utility and countries do as they want and are judged by those decisions, by the way. So, export controls increasingly important, consolidated and being the instrument that countries that are really into nuclear activities want to be a part. So that is very important. In terms of the current political environment, I would say, nothing has changed, and on the contrary, the backdrop of the nuclear activities in the world are only conducive to more relevance of the NSG. If you take the world, the post-Fukushima or post-GCPOA or post-Iran deal, you only see an increased curve in nuclear activities and trade. Maybe in decline in Western Europe, but that is certainly not the case in Asia or even Latin America and other parts of the world, where more nuclear is considered to come in the next few decades or so. So there is going to be considerable activity in the nuclear market, hence attributing or giving the NSG even more importance than it has today. So this is very important. Revealingly, you may have seen or noted that even the GCPOA established a procurement channel that has a contact with the work of the NSG. We in the NSG, under my chairmanship, opened a dialogue with a procurement working group established by the GCPOA, which has been functioning very, very well, whereby we are receiving information from this procurement channel, since it establishes an exception in terms of trade and in terms of how countries which are parties to the GCPOA and to the NSG as well function vis-à-vis those, like my own, for example, and other countries which, being in the NSG, are not parties to the GCPOA, but still may or may not be trading. So there are all sorts of intricacies that must be looked into, because they are very relevant to the way in which we are going to be operating. So all these things are there and merit your analysis and the follow-up that we need to give to them. Very briefly, I would also like to touch upon the issue of how the group operates and how it tries to catch up with technological developments. Some have argued, and with reason, that when you have an instrument like this, which has discrete lists of technologies, material, equipment, the risk of obsolescence is big. And this is correct. This is correct. The NSG has reacted to this in a reasonable, I would say, in a reasonably efficient manner. The lists have been changed more than 20 times by now, especially we had what we call a fundamental review, which took place between 2011 and 2013, and there we changed, we adopted a number of very important changes. Not only, I must say, in the sense of listing things, but also on de-listing things. Because some of the, we know that nuclear technology in some aspects is a quite old technology, not in everything, but in many things. So there are many components and parts that become so common and so used that they are irrelevant in terms of non-proliferation and control. And also there is a problem of controllability because of their widespread use in industry. So the rules and the lists and the guidelines are evolving. We felt that it was very important that the group would not remain a group of political, diplomatic, legal nature, and so we equipped ourselves with a permanent technical body, which did not exist before. The need for this was felt when we were undergoing this fundamental review I just mentioned. We had a dedicated meeting of technical experts, so-called DMT, and it was felt that the work of this group had been so useful that we should make it permanent, and this is what we did. Of course, there were some discussions, because, you know, this perennial issue of the technical versus the political, and the technical getting a life on its own and becoming some sort of unguided instance, which hasn't happened yet. So we have created and established what we call predictably a technical expert group, which is meeting regularly and which provides an opportunity for countries to come and propose to list new pieces of equipment or technologies, even software. For example, we have added specialized software through the work of the technical expert group, which I think is very interesting. And also to de-list. Some countries come and they have to make the case for a de-listing, this is quite interesting, and they have to explain why they feel that some things should be delisted. So we have analysis of commercial nature and otherwise, so we can establish this. There is also, through this, the analysis, yeah, the analysis of new and so-called disruptive technologies. This has been, this is in vogue, and people are, when I speak about the NSG, there are many questions about this. I have in mind in particular 3D printing and these sorts of developments, where people believe that could be disrupted in the sense that through technologies that are apparently benevolent, one could be printing itself a bomb, to say it in a quite brutal way. This is, of course, not the case, but we are looking into this. There has been a proposal, there is an active proposal on 3D printing in front of the NSG. So we are trying to look into all these things. Lastly, since I have exceeded the time, even with your generosity, of course, you are aware that there is an issue of the aspiration of some countries, in particular countries which are not parties to the NPT, to join the NSG. This is in a way a confirmation of what I said first. Countries that are seriously in nuclear matters feel the need to be a party to this system, to this, I would say, grouping of consultation and harmonization of policies. Goes without saying that this has triggered a fascinating and politically complex debate, since one could even argue that having countries that are not parties to the NPT in the NSG could be a contradiction in terms, talking from a logical point of view. But of course, we are in the world of politics and not in the world of logic. And what we are trying to do is to deal with these realities, see how best to come with a solution which will be non-discriminatory and ensure the continued relevance of the group. I stop here, and I would be more than happy to take any questions that you may have. Thank you very much.
I'm sure there will be many, thank you very much. Let me turn to our second speaker, who's Mr. Mark Hibs, who's a senior associate in Carnegie's Nuclear Policy Program based in Berlin and Forn. How can you be based in two places at the same time? You will explain that to us as well. Before joining... I was told that it's automatically on.
This is working. I think if you come closer.
Maybe move closer.
Yeah, thanks very much. Oh, indeed. So before joining Carnegie in 2010, he was an editor and correspondent in the field of nuclear energy, nuclear trade, and non-proliferation. His work appeared in a number of publications, and I'm sure most of you have read most of them. And his research is focused broadly on international nuclear trade and non-proliferation governments in four main areas. These are international nuclear trade regime, decision-making at International Atomic Energy Agency, nuclear safeguards and verification, and bilateral nuclear cooperative arrangements. We've heard a few words about why the NSG is often viewed as an unjustant, having a tendency towards technology denial to non-nuclear weapon states. And we also heard that from Rafa, that others argue that the NSG has actually managed to productively transform, responding to the verification challenges in the early 90s, to developing a list of duties, materials, and working to curb illicit networks, and it is indeed working in these two parallel lines. Now, what can you add to us on the NSG, Mark, from your perspective, especially from the main four areas that I've just mentioned in the research?
Right. Thank you, Judith, for your introduction, and I want to thank the EU Consortium for inviting me to this meeting this afternoon. The NSG faces challenges that concern its decision-making, and these challenges, I would argue, are indeed logical. They are not, they don't come from nowhere, they develop logically from the history of the NSG and from its mission. For the last, say, six years, seven years, I've been working with participating governments of the NSG on the future of the group, issues that have come up. And in the last three of those years, I've spent most of the time working on the prescient issue of membership, so I'm going to focus most of my comments in this initial statement on the issue of membership in this short timeline. We can get into the questions you raised during the Q and A and be more than willing to contribute to that discussion. In the area of membership, there are two primary issues facing the group. One of them is more near-term, and the other one is a more longer-term issue. The longer-term issue is the challenge of finding consensus in a mechanism where increasingly in time it may become more and more difficult to identify like-mindedness of the membership. Second issue, the more near-term issue that is on people's minds right now, concerns the membership of non-NPT states in the group. This is first and foremost recently India, and then Pakistan, and thereupon Israel. This issue, the issue of non-NPT state membership, has been looming over the group ever since about a decade ago, 2005 and '06, when the United States and India announced to the world that they were going to embark upon peaceful nuclear cooperation. Because for that to happen, it would require that India is fitted into a nuclear trade regime, including the NSG, which has been aimed at preventing India from getting nuclear items from suppliers, nearly all of which are members of the NSG. So that's the challenge. I think if you follow the day-to-day blow-by-blow accounts of what's happening in the NSG and around it, surrounding the issue of membership, you'll be confused, because there's a certain amount of contradiction in the way this issue has been framed by the international media. In fact, contrary to some of the statements that have been made by people, including in this room, or not in this room, but in this meeting, the, there are strong reasons why countries that are outside the NPT should be considered to be members. We shouldn't forget that right from the beginning, as Ambassador Grossi has hinted at in his presentation, the NSG was established on the premise that the NPT would not suffice to prevent the spread of nuclear weapons. And that happened ironically, because India tested a nuclear explosive device in 1974 on the basis of progress made by India, aided by peaceful nuclear cooperation agreements with a number of countries. So that's the origin of the group, and it has continued to percolate through in all of its decision-making since. The idea that the NPT would not suffice to stem the spread of nuclear weapons in the NSG context, when it was formed after the Indian explosion, ultimately, in my mind, implies that multilateral export control rules will be deficient unless there are a number of countries that are outside the NPT for historical reasons and have sensitive nuclear technology, including reprocessing, uranium enrichment, and nuclear weapons, if they don't adhere to the guidelines. You can have an export control regime that includes 150-plus countries that are already committed to not having nuclear weapons, but you have a serious problem if your regime does not include, for any number of reasons, a small number of countries that have these capabilities and are not adhering to the guidelines. So that's the fundamental challenge and the real reason, in my mind, why the NSG's participating governments are considering strongly, including India and Pakistan and Israel, into the group as members. That's the reason. You know, just to illustrate this, I mean, I think it should be fairly clear to people, it certainly is to people here today, that what we experienced with the Connet work, for example, in the 1980s and the 1990s, made clear to everybody the dangers that could result if certain states are excluded from the NSG or are, the states are not encouraged in an effective way to adhere to the guidelines of the group. That said, at the same time, over the last four decades, the NSG has come to understand that the NPT, as deficient as it was in the early days of, since its inception, has gained in status as a norm-setting treaty with 180, 180-plus parties. in status as a norm-setting treaty with 180, 180-plus parties, supported by an IAEA safeguard system that is now well-established as the yardstick for nuclear verification in the world. That was not really the case, I would argue, in the early '70s, but it is the case today. So, right now, all NSG members are members of the NPT, and, as you know, over time, the NSG has formally linked itself with the NPT through the requirement of full-scope IAEA safeguards as a condition for supply. So, this is a situation that we face today. In this situation, it's then, in my view, very fitting that the members of the NSG are going to ask themselves whether non-NPT parties would share the aspirations of the others in the group that are adhering to the guidelines and if, you know, if and when these countries outside the NPT express the desire to become members. In theory, these questions would be superfluous if it were the case that non-NPT states agreed to adhere to the guidelines without becoming members. Then the problem would be obviated. Unfortunately, that's not the history of the group. The history of the NSG shows that, as a state becomes a nuclear supplier, it attracts the attention of other countries that are members of the group. It establishes its credentials as a country that can supply nuclear equipment. It engages with the NSG, as Ambassador Grossi said, the desire to enter the confines of the NSG, enacts an outreach program with the group, and then eventually, the history of the group is that eventually that country will become a member. So, that's the reason why the issue of like-mindedness enters the picture. As soon as a state is a member of the NSG, any state, the chance—the possibility exists theoretically that that country could paralyze the group and even defeat its purpose if it doesn't share the aspirations of the other members. And in the case of a state which is not a party to the NPT, it's, in a sense, kind of a red flag because the NPT expresses a number of aspirations that the members share, and if a country's not in that treaty, then the question has to be raised whether a country is like-minded at a certain level. It's as simple as that. Could be the case, for example, for a country outside of the NPT, that it seeks membership in the NPT to essentially validate its non-NPT nuclear weapons, that this is an issue that has come up again and again. These things would have to be discussed internally in the group. Members would come up with an answer to that question. Now, in 2008, most of you probably are aware that, following up from the interest of India and the United States to have nuclear cooperation, in 2008, it was agreed that the NSG would afford nuclear trade privileges to India by exempting India from the full-scope safeguards rule. That was a fairly simple solution to that specific problem at that time. But with membership on the table, that's just not possible. Basically, the group has, in this regard, two sets of issues and questions that it has to address. The first, as I said, is the question as to whether or not these states are like-minded. The second is about how the membership of NSG states, non-NPT states coming into the group, would affect the NSG's normal operation and its guidelines. So, you know, Ambassador Grossi and his colleagues have been, for several years, into a discussion about what like-mindedness would imply. Because that's a very tricky and slippery discussion with a lot of different views, quite a large number of member states in the NSG would welcome steps that non-NPT states would take to demonstrate their like-mindedness. And these steps, there's been a number of proposals, a number of things talked through. I have, under Carnegie Endowment, a long analysis of this that I did for the PGEs a few months ago and posted it on our website, goes through a whole list of these things. They include conditions such as no nuclear weapons testing, and one that I'm quite interested in, which is an agreement by states to make legally binding commitments that would essentially match NPT Article 1 and 6, for example, bringing the states closer to the NPT in essential areas in a legally binding way. And to do it this way would essentially allow the NSG to make a decision on these matters as a matter of general policy and not, as a few member states would like, as a singular exception for one state or another state. So, that's the like-mindedness issue. The other thing that I mentioned, the second point here, is a group of questions about what the impact of membership by non-NPT states would imply for the guidelines and on the NSG's internal procedures and operations. I'll just give you a short list of these. There, you know, I think there's probably a list that we've—we have worked on and accumulated of about 30 to 40 questions that we believe at Carnegie Endowment are things that the group would have to address, in any event, in the case of a non-NPT state becoming a member. A few of them would include the question as to whether, as has been the case since the inception of the NSG, whether the NSG would continue to focus on denying transfers of nuclear items to these states to inhibit their nuclear weapons programs. Would that remain the case, were these states to become members? Questions about how safeguards would be applied to verify that transfers to these countries would not involve diversions. There is the basic question about what would be the future of the rule for—that links nuclear trade privileges to full-scope safeguards. That would have to be addressed. There is a basic principle in the guidelines that basically says that no transfer of dual-use goods can take place—or should take place—to an unsafeguarded nuclear fuel activity in a country if there's a risk of a diversion or if there's a risk of nuclear terrorism. In a case like India or Pakistan or Israel, how would that be applied? The NSG's moving forward and dealing with this and the members that it has, but, you know, there are certain constraints operating here that may not obtain for a country which is not in the NPT. One way of looking at this would be to look at, in the case of India, a separation plan that was agreed to between India and the United States as a condition for nuclear trade. And it's not clear that the separation plan, as we know it, would suffice to address the requirements that come from the guidelines. So, you know, this is another matter that the membership is going to have to deal with. In the course of negotiating the exception in 2008, a number of things were included in the record of that exception, a document called IMSRC 734, which details a number of things that are part of that exception agreement. Some of those things may be relevant. For example, the question as to whether India may be defined as a nuclear weapon state. My understanding is that if you look at India's export control legislation, in the preamble of this document, it defines India as a nuclear weapon state. And if that's the case, it's not at all clear that that can be carried over into the parlance of the NSG. So, there's a number of these things that have to be discussed. And to my knowledge, as of the last plenary meeting of the NSG in the middle of—middle of this year, these questions were not resolved at that time. So, my concern is if these issues are not resolved, then the PGEs, the participating governments, they could decide Indian membership without knowing what that would imply for the operations of the mechanism. And, you know, also, they run the risk that a new member would be essential to deciding what the rules of the game would be before, you know, before essentially the country becomes a member. So, so, these are important, but there's also another aspect I just briefly mentioned, and that's the fact that—that there is, as Ambassador Grossi suggested, an attempt by the group, a strong effort to address the requirements of the international community for greater transparency in the international export control mechanisms. And I'm quite confident that there'll probably be 100-plus members of the NPT that, upon a decision to include a non-NPT member into the membership of the NSG, those countries would want to know what is the general policy that's guiding this process and what are the rules. So, doing it as a policy measure and not as a singular exception for one country would be a good opportunity for the NSG to make a statement about what the NPT means to the group. So, I'll just leave it at that, and the other questions that Judith mentioned are important ones, and we can talk about those during the Q and A.
Thank you very much, Matt. And let me turn to Christos Kortis. He's going to tell us more about the norm-setting function and the role that the NSG has played and the national trade controls and the interrelationship between these norms. Let me introduce Christos briefly. He has been working in the area of dual-use trade controls and nonproliferation for several years. His principal area of expertise concerns the EU trade control system, export compliance, and dual-use research. He holds a doctoral diploma on the implications of trade controls for research activities undertaken by academia and industry organizations. His research was funded and developed by the European Commission's Joint Research Center. He currently works as an independent expert associated with the University of Liège. You have—you can continue with the more sort of license and expert controls-related leg of this introductory presentations, please, Christos.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair Lady. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like, before I start with this presentation, to clarify that currently I work on different projects with the European Studies of the—European Studies Unit of the University of Liège and the European Commission Joint Research Center. However, I'm here today in my own capacity, not representing the European Commission. And let's start. Well, as we are today in the creativity and exploration room, I thought that the creative idea would be to discuss the main areas where the NSG should continue its work or step up its efforts so as to benefit the implementation of trade controls at national level. In order to do this, I'll focus on the five elements that, in my opinion, every trade control system may need to have in place. The first is a basic legal act, the second a control list, the third an information exchange system, the fourth a system for enforcement, and the fifth an outreach program. In addition, I'll provide some hints of the role and possible contribution of the NSG with regards to each of these areas. I'm also very keen to offer you more specific examples of how this can be done in practice during the Q and A session. At the end of my talk, I'll suggest also the launch of an initiative that could advance the NSG contribution in relation to these five areas, responding at the same time to known areas of concern and challenges lying ahead. Before I start, let me clarify that these observations apply also to other—to the other major multilateral export control regimes, namely the Australia Group, the Vassar Arrangement, and the Missile Technology Control Regime. To begin with, every trade control system requires a basic legal act setting main objectives and provisions. In this regard, the basic guidelines that the NSG has established lead the way for implementing ensuring measures at national level. Of course, participating states may implement additional measures and define in greater detail trade control rules. However, the robustness, legal clarity, and functionality of norms generated by the NSG is very important, especially since participating governments will quite frequently copy-paste such provisions when building their national legislation. The second element concerns the control lists. The operation of trade controls is largely list-based. Again, participating governments may establish additional controls for national security purposes, yet their national control lists and related terminology derive in the first place by the lists established in the framework of the NSG. What is important here is an effort to keep pace with technological advancements and, most interestingly, to establish international control lists with clear terms and well-defined thresholds. I move on to the third necessary element for a trade control system, that is consultation mechanisms for information exchange through secure and trusted channels. Reinforcing information exchange within the NSG can do both, promote the harmonized application of controls and set the example for further initiatives at national and international level. And enhanced cooperation is necessary as much among states as between the competent authorities within a given state. This brings me to the fourth aspect concerning the need for an effective system for enforcement and penalties. Especially the collaboration between licensing and enforcement authorities is of utmost importance, and I think a good idea could be to bring together more often customs and licensing authorities at both multilateral and national level. The fifth element, that, in my opinion, is quite important, concerns the conduct of outreach activities, and such outreach activities should target both state and non-state actors. An interesting remark here is that the risk of misuse of dual-use materials, equipment, software, and related technology concerns industry as well as research institutions. Therefore, promoting adherence to the nonproliferation clause by all stakeholders requires doing at least two things. The first is better and open communication of the trade control objectives. This can be done, for instance, by reaching out to academia, industry, and non-member states with a view to diluting misconceptions and communicating the objectives of trade controls. Of particular importance would be also to bring together representatives from academia, industry, and security communities to discuss the challenges relating to the implementation of controls. The second thing to do is to improve the overall credibility of trade controls. And in order to do this, we may need to adopt a pragmatic and weighted approach in implementing such controls. In addition to these five aspects, there are some specific areas, such as risk assessment procedures, controls of nonlisted items, and controls on intangible transfers of technology that are of high importance to the implementation of strategic trade controls. In that regard, the adoption by the NSG of best practices and guidance could create the necessary conditions for moving closer to the attainment of a global-level playing field for exports of nuclear-related dual-use items. Today's excellent initiative, and I would like to congratulate the European Consortium and particularly the IWS for organizing this session and the hall conference, show today's excellent initiative is geared towards the future of the NSG. And the NSG has taken steps in order to address most of the aspects I referred to earlier. I would mention, for instance, the energy commitment to keep its guidelines abreast with evolutions concerning most sensitive technologies, such as those relating to enrichment and reprocessing. Also, the continual review and update of its control lists, or the conduct of outreach activities, and the organization of regular information exchange meetings and ad hoc working—technical working groups meetings whenever is needed. However, there are further initiatives that could be taken in the future for enhancing all the different areas mentioned earlier and for dealing with open questions and problems. I think that being reactive to new trends and issues raised occasionally is not enough. Instead, anticipating potential challenges and problems and taking the necessary measures in a timely manner could be very important. Probably establishing a roadmap towards the adoption of a strategy for the NSG could be to the benefit of the participating governments and the nonproliferation regime in general. The definition of such a strategy could be the outcome— The definition of such a strategy could be the outcome of deliberations relying on inputs and expertise from academic community, consultations with main stakeholders, as well as previous experience. The objective of such an effort should be to address major questions and decide on the main lines for the future course of the NSG. For instance, do we possess the necessary means for effectively enforcing existing guidelines and control lists? Do we need to stretch the scope of controls, including also new possibilities and controlled entries? What kind of states is it important to welcome on board? What shall be the main NSG priority areas to focus efforts and resources for the coming years? For example, is there a need to improve cooperation and capacity building among the participating governments or to focus on outreach to non-member states? I'll conclude by saying that so far, most of the time, the multilateral export control regimes have been evolved mainly due to external factors and events. This is quite logical, but maybe the time has come to adopt a more proactive stance. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much, Christos. And to all panelists, I haven't even opened the floor, and I was just going to say that I, I have a few questions myself to the panelists, but in, in case there are no questions from the floor, but there are many. But yet, let me, let me just sort of prop one of them, and that is that, well, I would wonder whether at some point either colleagues in the floor or the experts in the panel could say a few words about whether they see a chance or prospects for a global export control regime, or whether they see chances for a, for a, for a treaty on controlling on supplies, actually, which would be some sort of a complement to the NPT. But these are the very theoretical questions, and I will be biased, and I will start with the lady in fourth row, and then with the second lady, and then the third, and the third lady, and then the man will come. But let me, in the spirit of total biasness and in, in open biasness, okay, the lady there, the lady here, and then the lady over there, please.
Thank you very much. I'm Leila Dalwood from the State University of Rio de Janeiro. I'd like to ask Professor Hibs and Mr. Grossi their take, especially, I would like to, I'm very interested in Brazil's foreign policy and Argentina's foreign policy, and as you all know, they've been pressured to sign the additional protocol as soon as they were admitted to the Nuclear Suppliers Group. So, I was wondering, what would be their take, Brazil's and Argentina's position, if India and Pakistan would be admitted to the Nuclear Suppliers Group? Thank you very much.
Thanks for the very clear and succinct question, and thanks for introducing yourself and talking to the microphone directly. Can I just also ask other colleagues to follow suit? Introduce yourself, please, and to the microphone.
Senator Saher Kamran, I'm the member of parliament from Pakistan. Since I'm not an expert, neither am an academician, so my question is based on the concern that any member of the parliament should have. So, I, I just, first of all, I would like to compliment the panel for very enlightening debate and very, very good presentations. I wanted to ask whether the non-NPT regime has been influenced or governed by the commercial and the political objectives, because if I look, look at the 2005 India-US nuclear operation, and then 2008 waiver granted to India, then MTCR membership granted to India, where Pakistan and India both are applicant to NSG, and this is a very important, interesting subject for us, and if I look towards the commercial interest, then I would say that Pakistan is a very attractive market, because we are a country which is facing the energy crisis, and we have an experience of operating our nuclear power plants very successfully for more than 40 years. And to overcome the energy crisis and to have our industries run and to create opportunities and the prosperity in the country, we definitely would like to benefit from NSG. And if there, if there is no criteria-based approach...
What's the question?
Yeah, yeah, actually, it's the comment and the question, both, that if there is no criteria-based approach, then what, are we not compromising the nonproliferation regime? And the US push, in the morning also, I asked, my concern was on the regional stability. I asked Mr. Countryman, and he took my question totally non-serious, that exactly by pushing or giving favoritism to one country, are we not compromising not only the NPT regime, its credibility, and also the strategic stability?
Please stick to the question.
Yeah, also, also, also the strategic stability, stability in the region. So, this, this is a concern, that if, if there is a criteria, then it should be for every country, and if the criteria is compromised, then it, it will have lot of concerns within our region, and not only the concern, but the implication will go a long way.
I see, okay, that's, thank you very much. And the lady there, Taria Holm.
Tariq Kronbeck is my name.
Oh, Tariq Kronbeck, sorry.
I am from CIPRI and, and former member of the European Parliament and Chair of Iran Relegation, therefore, my question deals first with Rafael about the alternative procurement channel that was established for Iran. Why was this necessary, and what are sort of the differences in relation to normal NSG criteria? And the second question to Mark, you talk about like-minded states and argue that it's important that countries are within the NSG in order for the export to be controlled and legalized. I think it's a good argument, but would you ever see North Korea becoming a like-minded state?
That's an interesting question. In an effort to strike a balance, I would like to take three gentleman's question. I would like to take that gentleman over there, Tariq Rauf, and then Ambassador here, And then I will give the floor back to the panelists to answer the questions.
I am Ambassador Nakpui from Pakistan. I run my think tank, Center for International Strategic Studies. Master Grossi, your presentation was very interesting and sort of clarified many points. What I would like to know as to what is the status of your consultations as a special envoy, and what kind of steps do you envisage in regard to the question of membership of non-NPT members? Thank you, sir.
Thanks for the clear and short question. Tariq Rauf, please.
Thank you, Judith. Tariq Rauf from CIPRI. First of all, to respond to your point, Judith, about a multilateral regime, some years ago, the Norwegian Institute for International Affairs published a book edited by Sverre Lordgard, and I have a chapter in there that makes the case that since every country except four are parties to the NPT, they are already obligated to have export controls. So, I don't have time to get into the details, but there is, in addition to my article, there are others who have also written on, on the subject. I wanted to challenge the, the panel by making the argument that, in my view, now the NSG has become a threat to the international system, because by some recent decisions of 2005 and 2008 and the current discussions on non-NPT membership, the group is going against the consensus in 1995 and 2000 that new nuclear supply agreements must be required full scope safeguards as a condition of supply.
Microphone.
And it's also a violation of commitments of nuclear weapon-free zone states who might be considering supply of nuclear items to non-NPT states. And why is not the NSG making the CTBT, Signature and Ratification, a precondition for non-NPT states if one were to go that way? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ambassador Heth there, please, next.
Thank you very much. I'd be very brief. First of all, I just wanted to say that Ambassador Grossi and Mark Hibs have given a very good broad outline, as has Mr. Christos, but as far as South Asia is concerned, it's the other end of the telescope, so it's the membership issue which is, for both countries, very crucial. And I won't go into the big details of that, but I, I have written a small paper on it yesterday or today, I think, which I've left on the, on the table there, and anybody who doesn't get it can ask me for an email for it. But the point is, very simply, that the actual reality is that there is a big push from the supporters of India or America, whatever, to make it a member by itself. So, I think once you keep in mind that if, if that were to go through, apart from the attack on the principles of the equity and other things and of the NSG, that would have very grave consequences in our region, which are being spelled out. And I think Mark Hibs had talked about like-mindedness. I think it's for the NSG members to put forward what is their criteria that they want. I mean, I've suggested in my writing that any country which wants to become a member should put all its civilian activities under safeguards. In other words, that if India wants to graduate to there, and we have no exception if it does so along with us, they have to do that. It's not that that's sealed in stone, that 2008 agreement in that case. So, I think these are just a couple of issues, which I think are relevant.
Thank you very much. For those who are interested, I think copies of Ambassador Heth's paper on the future of the NSG are on the back of the room, so on your way leaving the room, you can pick up a copy. I would like to close, draw a line here and ask our panelists to reply to some of the, to the questions and comments, and then we have a second round of questions, please. I suggest that, Mark, you begin now, and then Rafael continues.
I think I took notes on all the questions that were addressed to me here. If not, then I beg your indulgence and just repeat your questions. The issue was raised about Brazil and Argentina. We were fortunate to have Rafael with us, who comes from the region and is intimately aware of all of these things, so I'll leave him to some more detailed explanation about this. But in a nutshell, I think the more, the general explanation or general answer to your question is, I think for Brazil, as for many other states that are members of the group, that there is a, that the people who are the decision-makers in this are not of one mind. We've seen frequently in the deliberation about membership, including in the United States, including in Western European countries, countries in Latin America, countries in Asia, a situation where, to perhaps oversimplify, at the political level, frequently heads of state and foreign affairs ministers are inclined to be in favor of enlarging the membership to include India or Pakistan on the basis of that their bilateral relations with these countries would be beneficial, that would, would be, would benefit. And these are decision-makers who are not focused on the minutiae and the details of the nonproliferation regime as those of us here in the room are. And you'll find more frequently that at the working level, it's more often the case that in many of these countries, the, the people who are working on this issue on a daily basis are, are asking more critical questions and are less inclined to make a blanket decision or be in favor of including India or another country in the group on this basis, especially, Ambassador, to get to your point, on the basis of a singular exception. That is something which I think for people who are interested in international governance, that raises issues that people in many, many walks of international life are uncomfortable about. So, that's a general answer to that question. I, I also would want to underscore that there, to my knowledge, there's no relationship between efforts by individual state parties to get Brazil and Argentina to conclude an additional protocol with the agency would be relevant in this particular context, because the agency, I'm sorry, the NSG has considered informally the question as to whether or not the additional protocol should be considered in the future a, a condition for nuclear supply, but this has not been a consensus position, in part, as you say, because Brazil and Argentina have, have not agreed to that. There was a question about Pakistan regarding criteria versus exception by Madam Parliamentarian here. That's exactly the point, that there is indeed a, there has been a debate about this, and it goes back to the period of time I mentioned originally, 2005 and '06, when the United States and India wanted what they called a clean exception for India, which meant that India would be exempted from the full scope safeguards rule as a matter of an exception. And even at that point, there were many of us in the, in the NGO community who are on the outside of this decision-making process who encouraged the United States government to think about a criteria-based approach to the problem, even for the exception, let alone for membership. So, this is a decision, this has been a, a thing that's been under discussion by the group for quite a long period of time, and remains to be the case. I think it would be fair to say, as an observer only, that following the discussion that has taken place this year among member states, that a considerable number would like to see a more general approach to this, where you, there, doesn't have to call it criteria, in one paper, I, I think I called it something else, but it's, you could say benchmarks for nonproliferation behavior, things of this nature. And the bottom line is, again, to get back to this issue of, of like minuses, the, the effort is to assure the NSG PGs that, that countries coming into the group are going to share their values. That's, that's really what it's about. And to do it on the basis of a criteria, a set of criteria, which would be generalized, would be, would make it more equitable, and it would make it easier for the NSG to explain to the outside world that they're doing things as a matter of systematic policy and not as a matter of arm-twisting or, or political machinations that happen someplace else that are not transparent. So, this criteria is on the agenda for these reasons. There's a question about the DPRK. You know, I think in, in practical terms, you know, we talk about non-NPT states becoming candidates or, or joining the group as members, and in the beginning, this was provoked by, as I mentioned, the US-Indian aspirations for nuclear commerce beginning in, in 2005 and '06, and it has expanded to India for a whole lot of reasons, including, of course, the fact that, that India and Pakistan are in a situation of strategic rivalry. So, clearly, if India is favored by an important country like the United States to have a singular exception, clearly, this is something which Pakistan will be very unhappy about and, and would want to broaden the discussion, and they've done that. So, we have now India and Pakistan being discussed. Israel, as some of you probably know, for many years has been the only country which, to my knowledge, has been understood by the NSG's members to be adhering to the guidelines without becoming a member. And on that basis, many people have suggested that, once the NSG fights its way through the, the question about India and Pakistan, that it would only be a matter of time before, before Israel would apply for membership, and with a certain amount of, of confidence that its credibility, its credentials would be, from the point of view, its technical export controls capacity would be welcomed. That leaves the only other state in the group that really matters, and that, that's the DPRK, and frankly, no one, no one in the group is talking about this. I'm, I'm quite sure that in the much, much longer trajectory, that the Republic of Korea, which is a member of the NSG, is thinking about that. But, but the, the South Koreans are by no means under any illusion that getting them into the group, getting the DPRK into the group, would be simple, or would be near-term or even medium-term. More interesting is the question about the status of Iran, a country which is in the NPT, a country which is making a strong effort, if you believe what the Atomic Agents, International Atomic Agents, International Atomic Energy Agency tells us in the Board of Governors since the end of last year, that they're making a strong effort to... since the end of last year, that they're making a strong effort to comply and to implement and perform according to the, what's expected in the JCPOA, that at some point, Iran may, should it choose to continue to cooperate extensively, would demonstrate its bona fides on nonproliferation, and there may be a day in the future when Iran would apply for membership with the NSG, as far-fetched as that would have appeared to anyone over the last 10 years, particularly when you listen to the polemic about the NSG that was coming from Iran. So times change, and it's perfectly possible that a number of years from now, perhaps once the JCPOA has run its course and we find ourselves in 2023 or 2025, that Iran would apply for membership.
Thank you very much, Raphael.
Yeah, there were, thank you very much. There were a number of points on my distinguished Brazilian colleague's question on my country and her. The, there are two things that you may think of, or maybe you have research on that already. The Brasilia plenary, where the NSG discussed for the first time the issue of additional protocol as a condition of supply. In Brasilia, it was decided that that could be applied once all members of the NSG, all participating governments, would have subscribed to an additional protocol. So at each and every session of the consultative group, we check whether that, whether the conditions decided at the Brasilia plenary have been met or not. So this is the, as Mark also confirmed, this is the situation right now. This is continuously under review, and until all PGs have subscribed an additional protocol, the AP is not a condition of supply. The condition of supply is a CSA, it's a comprehensive safeguards agreement. This is something which is important. Also regarding the AP, and interestingly, from the point of view of other foreign policies of our two countries, is that at the Nordwijk plenary in Holland in 2013, with regards to enrichment and reprocessing, it was decided that transfers would be restricted to countries' CSAs and AEPs, and countries having a regional arrangement, which was us. It's not mentioned, it's not mentioned as such, but it was the consensus that we could meet in recognition of the role that Abak plays there. This is an evolving issue naturally, and we will have to be following developments, but this is the state of play on that. On Madame MP, issue of influence, influence, Mark has addressed that partially as well, but the commercial factors, of course. This is about trade, it's about safeguards, it's about politics, it's about everything, and the commercial factors have also an influence there. Regarding your very pertinent question about the procurement, this is a very interesting element that has not been sufficiently studied. Perhaps, Mark, you should illuminate us and write a paper about this at some, or Tarek. But it's very interesting, because when you look at the JCPOA, the JCPOA is a very complex, very complex and very elaborated instrument, that has a number of parts. You have their restrictions, you have limitations, you have interdictions, you have technology adaptations, you have shipment, you have a number of things. Maybe all that arms control can offer is there in different ways. One of those, a very important one, were, two of those, had to do with shipment of nuclear material out of Iran, so marketing it, and also transferring to Iran technologies needed to ensure the fulfillment of one of the most crucial aspects of the JCPOA, which is the modification of the core of the Arak reactor, which was a heavy water-producing reactor, and hence potentially brutal. So, and that had to be provided by someone. And of course, in, in, the negotiators, six parties in that negotiation, decided that one of the parties in that, there is a division of labor there, I don't want to get too much into detail because it's a bit intricate, but, for example, one of the countries is providing this technology. In abstract terms, this is not something you would be able to do. So there was an exemption created, exception created for that country to be able to do that, in the context of the JCPOA, and in the context of the standing commission that has been created, following the provisions of the US Security Council resolution that made operational the JCPOA. It sounds a bit strange, but I think it's, I think it's rather clear. So you needed a procurement channel to make legal the transfers that were going to take place because of the JCPOA. And we, in the NSG, said, hey, we are here, because some countries, mine and others, could also be interested potentially in selling some stuff, why not? So what we decided was that, for transparency's sake, it would be good to have a dialogue, to have to receive, because for the time being, this is of course legal, because it's under the US Security Council resolution, but there are also timelines for this, which will hopefully be met. So we are getting information as the JCPOA parties see fit, quite clearly, but they are coming to us and they are informing how this is working, because there is a, there is a mechanism to do that. So that is for the, for the procurement challenge. Ambassador Nagli, you kindly asked me about the status of consultations. Of course, it's a very sensitive question, and you, this is in public domain, we are having a meeting in a few days, so it wouldn't be correct on my part to indicate in all detail what we're doing. What I can say is that the consultation process that I'm conducting is very active, and what we've seen is a massive interest in all PGs. In the beginning, when this was started after the plenary in Seoul, as Mark was reminding us, there was doubt about what to do. We had reached an impasse in Seoul, whereby the group was not able to take a decision on one of the applications that were on the table, so the chair, my successor, I'm in fact an outgoing chair, I'm the ongoing facilitator by the outgoing chair, and I'm part of the troika. So he asked me, since I had been doing this for some time, to continue and try to facilitate this. What I can say, and this has to do maybe with other comments that have been, have been done, made, is that what we are looking for is something which is of general application. We are not working on the basis of country A, or country B, or country C. We are working on something that, if successful, it's a big if, because it's a big issue, and the problems are big. So if successful, this is not something which is going to be for the benefit of country A, or for the benefit of country B, or for the benefit of country C. It is, if I may put it like this, an attempt to address the challenge or the question put to the group by the existence of three non-NPT countries, which actively aspire to become members of the NSG. So this is as much as I think I could say. Dr. Ralph was asking, was challenging the notion, or putting a challenging notion, that the NSG himself might be like those monsters that devour themselves, or devour the regime that they are predicated or built upon. I would, I love the question, and coming from such an expert, it's a temptation to engage in a very long discussion. I would say, remember, in the NSG, we have the five permanent members of the Security Council and all the depositories of the NPT. So I don't think the idea is to challenge and destroy the regime, but these countries are, for the first time, in front of an existential question, of one that has an essential nature. Essential things demand definitions or redefinitions. So let's never forget that the NSG is an arrangement, it's not a treaty. So it was a way, a practical way, to address a problem at a certain time in history. The nonproliferation regime, so, and it was established in the mid-'70s. Look at the world in the mid-'70s and look at the world where we are now. So it is only logical, and I'm not prejudging on what the results could be, that we come to these kinds of fundamental questions. I don't know if the answer will be yes or no, but I am not scandalized by the fact that we are in front of these questions. Hopefully, wisdom will prevail.
Thank you very much. We've got five more minutes. With your indulgence, we can chip away five minutes of your own break. I've got many, many hands in the air. Let me pick a lady in the back, in the very back, and let, well, as we said in the morning, there is no time for everyone to express themselves. It does not mean that we are not, we are discrediting anyone, it's just a time constraint. Let me take your question, and let me take this gentleman as first, and then the gentleman and that lady over there. Four questions, and really, please, just one question, one sentence, and then very short answers.
Thank you, Chair, for giving this opportunity. My name is Sitar Anur, and I'm a research fellow at Vienna Center for Disarmament and Nonproliferation. A quick question to Mr. Rafael Grossi. I understand your inability to comment on the ongoing consultative process, but if you could just quickly comment, if you want to, on the news that your probable acceptance of a two-stage process of membership.
Okay. Thank you for the brevity. The gentleman in the first row, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, the panelists also. I'm Adil Sultan, I work for the government in Pakistan. Ambassador Grossi's statement, concluding statement, we are in the world of politics and not logics. It explains everything. So the future of Nuclear Suppliers Group probably is quite bleak, because it is seen as such. I just want to seek your expert comments, Mark, about, there were certain obligations upon the United States under the Hyde Act, that the United States President was supposed to make certain determination in case there is change in operational status of safeguarded and unsafeguarded facilities within India. Secondly, he was supposed to encourage India, inform the Congress by a certain date that India would cease to freeze its fossil material production, encourage India to declare a date by this. Is there any progress on that? And third, final, there was an application or a letter by Israel in 2008 to the NSG chair. What happened? We never heard anything. Thank you.
Thank you for your brevity. The lady in the second row, please.
Hi, my name is Julie. I'm from the Atlantic Council. Thank you to the panelists. It's nice to meet you guys. My question is mainly towards Mark Hibs and Ambassador Grossi. I believe the questions you raised about like-mindedness of the group members is a valid one. How do you demonstrate it? What does it imply? But to what level do you think this concept of like-mindedness of group members is a static one? And do you think that this is turning to more of a divergent, or more of it being a dynamic one for the future? Thank you.
Thank you. And for a very short question, the gentleman over there.
Thank you very much. This is Rajiv Nair from Institute for Defense Strategy and Analysis, New Delhi. I have first questions, three first questions. Two for Mark Hibs. You talked about like-mindedness and nondiscriminatory approach for the membership. At the same time, you're talking about CTBT. Members Yuzid Anikov also talked. How do you reconcile it? Even members, members do not, even the main participants, even participants of...
This, this is about the, the gravity of this question.
This CTBT, the problem. Second question, first, about...
I'm sorry, Rajiv, could you repeat that again? We got interrupted here.
Are you reconciling the CTBT and the like?
Even, even countries, participant countries have ratified the CTBT. Second is about nuclear weapon status. I mean, does NSG give nuclear weapon status to countries? Even if India has written in the document, does it matter? It is a participant country, so this is second. Third question is about, yes, about Israel. Has Israel applied for the membership? How it is actively aspiring? So I am slightly puzzled.
Three questions.
Ambassador Grossi, and last comment, ma'am, because many Pakistanis have...
No, 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 please, 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 please. It's not about, it's not about difference. No, 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 please. You had your three questions, you had your three questions, and we are running out of time now. So I'm asking for equal brevity, our panelists, to very quickly answer these questions. Mark, you start.
All right. My answers will be brief, and they will be disappointing. I don't know the details of what the US is considering in the implementation of the Hyde Act under that. We can, we can talk about that offline, it'll be very complicated and probably very boring for most of the people in here, but we can talk about that. The other matter, Israel, again, you know, we know Israel has been a, is interested in this, they remain interested. My understanding is that Israel, for a number of reasons, did not force its application in a pushy way during this entire discussion. Personal impression I have is that Israel would be, would prefer to wait until the NSG makes some decisions that look like a policy, and then act accordingly. But I don't think, Israel's not in a hurry to join. I mean, they're adhering to the guidelines, and that will continue. So it's not going to happen right away, but it's something they remain interested in, seize them. The issue of like-mindedness, the question you have is a very good question, because things change over time. It is a dynamic issue, and that's one of the reasons that defining it is so damn difficult. It's not easy to do it. And I think, as I explained, I think that's the reason why the concerned member states want to see something on the ground that looks as if a country is committed. Bringing me to your issue about the CTBT, all I can say about CTBT is stay tuned. There is a very lively discussion about nuclear testing and the NSG. It's happening in real time. Some of us have suggested that CTBT participation would be, would be a very good signal to the group and the rest of the world, that a country is serious about its nonproliferation bona fides. That being said, my understanding, and you may correct me, Rajiv, and it's a question I have in return, one of the problems, you know, a number of, I mean, I think you could, we could have a discussion as to whether or not the PGs, the governments of the NSG would like to see, or would be happy, if a new applicant would sign the CTBT, as opposed to ratify it, okay? And obviously, ratification, as you point out, is not on the table in the United States right now for any, at the moment, and that's a real, that's a problem. For anyone who's anticipating that ratification would be a yardstick of like-mindedness, it's clear that that's going to be a problem. That being said, my also, I'm also given to understand that the understanding in India is that, unlike in some other countries, that signature, on the signature, on the CTBT means more in India than it does in other jurisdictions. That basically, some people in India have told me, they argue that if India signs the CTBT, it's almost concomitant to ratifying it, because of the nature of the parliamentary governmental decision process in India, which is different than it is in many other countries. So what I'm suggesting is that there are, these are nuances that in the discussion between India, Pakistan, other countries, and the NSG about a criterion that would have to do with testing, that these things would have to be discussed, and would have to be satisfied by all parties. So that's, that's...
Very briefly, on the question from you, I'm sorry. Very briefly, on the question from you, I'm sorry, on the so-called two-stage process, yeah, this is, I didn't call it that way, but it has become known as such, that simply describes the fact that, I mean, you have two possibilities when dealing with these applications. One would be to say yes or no, to decide on the merits of the applications, yes or no, and another would be to look into what is needed to be on the table on top of the application to make it possible. So, this is what's going on. And I wouldn't, I couldn't say this has been approved or not, the approach, I would say this is the basis upon which I'm working. And so, in a way, it's like saying, yes, it's a two-stage process, but I think people are putting too much into that label, if you want. But what we are discussing now is what is needed, what are the, and I'm not using the word criterion or factors or anything, because even those words in the NSG has different meaning and status. So, I'm simply talking in very general terms of what other elements are being considered, discussed, weighed by the PGs, by the participating governments. So, that is one. I think the other question was answered by Mark, on the issue of like-mindedness and dynamism of the notion, I think it's very interesting what you're saying. And it has to do a little bit with, I hope, what I, my last comment before. Like-mindedness is essential, and in this debate of the NSG, what I've seen is something very interesting, is that, not only now, in general, is that people are saying what the NSG is for. What is the, the NSG is there to do this. And hence, they say, if you take this or that decision, you are doing good or bad to the NSG. I would propose that we apply that methodology to any other agreement in the world. It doesn't work. I mean, you enter an agreement, a treaty, or an arrangement, according to your own interpretation of what that is, and what that is going to give you, in terms of security, in terms of whatever. There is no, and this is part of the constructive ambiguity, sometimes it is called, sometimes it is called, you know, I interpret the way I want it, and I sign to it. There is nothing that says that the NSG is there to do something in relation to other things. It is what it is. It is what it is. So, PGs will have to decide what kind of energy this one for the 21st century.
On that note, I thank for all our panelists, I'm sorry for questions, you didn't really get the chance. Would you like to comment on any of the?
We have the opinions from the insider, so probably I can discuss in the break.
I thank for the very active participation of the audience. I'm sorry for those who didn't get the microphone this time round. All I can offer is that our panelists are going to stay with us for the dinner, and you can approach them bilaterally. Again, thanks for the panelists, and thanks for the excellent audience. I have the impression that we could go on on the NSG for another hour easily, and we would still not exhaust the topic. But this is the time limit that we have had for this afternoon. Thank you very much for all of you.